So we, you can turn off your video if you're, if you're done because we're going to segue directly into our audience participation segment. We've had a fair amount of people sign up for that, which is great. So again, we're going to ask that comments please be limited to about three minutes if you can, and to identify which topic or proposed class that you wish to comment on. So I think what I'll do, participants have been notified about the, the, provided a link to the audience participation sections, but to get started, it will be Willie Cade, then Jesse Spiegel, and then Brendan Butler, and I'll try to signal in advance as we get to, to who is next. So Mr. Cade, or maybe Ms. Cade, could you please turn on your video if you're there? Hello? You are muted, Mr. Cade, but when you're ready, if you unmute, the floor will be yours.
Thank you. I'm in Class 12, Computer Programs for Repair. My name is Willie Cade. I'm a proud member of the Nebraska Farm Bureau. I'm speaking today in support of a continued exemption for agricultural equipment repair. Physical and logical, or computer-controlled transformation of agricultural equipment has continued its rapid advancement since the last review. I believe it's fair to say that the previously recognized frustration by farmers of the lack of access to tools or skills to make, make use of the exemptions has significantly increased. Producers fleets of equipment is a substantial factor of their profitability. Given the high costs and necessarily long utilization of agricultural equipment, those fleets are now transforming to the point where realizing the intent of the exemption is essential. Indeed, the unusually high demand and record prices for used equipment can be partly attributed to the ease of repair with less computerization. As noted in this year's submission from the American Farm Bureau, AFDF, access to software tools for repair does not diminish the value to right holders. I'm heartened that the registrar has identified a legitimate concern for the exemption benefits, engage in activities such as automobile repair that simply do not implicate copyright in the analog world. Additionally, the change to the exemption from users to such items that were lawfully acquired is helpful. I'm struggling with the issue of necessary tools and how to maintain the integrity of the act while simultaneously allowing for complete repair. Producers would greatly appreciate your guidance on how to thread this needle. Because software may need to be repaired, and because repair may need to change software, I urge the library to continue to grant the exemption for repairs, both in agricultural and generally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cade. It was very helpful. We appreciate your testimony. If there's no questions, I guess we, we will go to the next person, which is Mr. Spiegel. If Mr. Spiegel can be promoted to a panelist and turn video on. Then we will have Mr. Butler and Mr. Conifar will be next. Okay, Mr. Spiegel, if you can, great, with you? Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm going to be talking about Class 1. My name is Jesse Spiegel. I'm a student attorney in the Glusko Samuelson Intellectual Property Clinic at the American University of Washington College of Law, and we have worked with the Joint Educators for many years in this proceeding. Our society relies on video for everything. We communicate through video, we FaceTime, we send GIFs, younger people send Snapchat videos, and these often completely replace even speaking at all. So when we want to learn how to do something, let's say like cooking a meal or fixing electronic, most people don't open a recipe book anymore or an instruction manual. We go on YouTube. And of course, now we've grown accustomed to working, socializing, and learning online using videos. So clearly, effective education must also use more videos than ever to match how we now function in society. And using clips from movies and television shows are a part of how we use videos to learn. The value these clips can bring is recognized through the already granted exemptions, but the current exemptions include only a sliver of the educational experiences we are having online. We should be expanding access to education and not limiting it. And there are clear distinctions from the online learning platforms covered under the Joint Educators petition versus social media sites or entertainment platforms where users are using, or conceivably would use, short clips. Like TikTok, for example, is a platform where users are using clips to teach all kinds of ideas, but TikTok is not an online learning platform. Online learning platforms in our coalition have registered learners that enroll in courses to advance marketable and lifelong skills. They employ sophisticated digital protection measures, limit access to materials to students currently enrolled in courses, and make transformative uses of the clips constituting fair use. Joint educators online learning platforms are not designed to entertain, but instead operate for the purpose of providing educational instruction to enhance its user skill sets. In other words, these platforms respect the goals of the DMCA. And so we're aware of quality and access to education is a serious problem in America that implicates racial, class, gender, and age disparities that have long been identified but not remedied. So thankfully, the chance to promote better equity and access to high-quality education through the ability to use the internet, to offer courses at all times and in all settings, matching individual needs and goals, has been gifted to us through technologies that allow platforms like LinkedIn Learning or Osmosis and Musera Media to provide educational opportunities we previously could only receive in the traditional four corners of a classroom that is accessible only to some, virtual or not. So it's my view that we should celebrate this expansion of educational access, this very real opportunity in front of us to address inequities that exist in our educational system, even by simply chipping away at them through this exemption, and provide learners outside the box of K through 12 and accredited schooling means to have the same chance of commentary and critical thinking skills that comes from analysis of short clips from movies and TV shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Can I ask a question about how you would conceive of as an online learning platform if TikTok, for example, would, would not be one? You know, how would you treat YouTube, for example, because I know Khan Academy has a lot of videos on YouTube, which I think are, are ways you can experience the teachings of Khan Academy? Where would you put that?
Sure. I think YouTube is completely different from the platforms for several reasons. Users on YouTube rely on the virability of their videos. They want as many people as they can possibly have to view their videos. That, that's how they make their money. And the platforms that we're advocating for, it's the opposite. They control the access to their information and their educational materials through a variety of means, like you have to enroll, you have to be currently enrolled in a course to access the materials. And once your enrollment ends, your access to those materials also ends. Whereas on YouTube, things stay on in perpetuity, and, and they want as many eyeballs, regardless of if you're a registered learner or not, to come and view those materials. Also, anybody can upload something to YouTube regardless of if you're a sophisticated educator or not. Whereas the platforms we are advocating for, they're run by educators with, with serious credentials, and as well, they're employing digital protection measures and really making sure that the content that they're using is, is only used for the educational purposes that, that they're advocating for. Whereas YouTube is, is what I would call an entertainment platform.
Okay, so I take it that your position is that if you are, for example, Khan Academy, you would have to sort of treat your use of the same content differently depending upon what platform it is presented on with respect to 1201, and potentially an exceptional limitation that they may be relying upon. Is that correct?
I would say so, yes, definitely.
Okay, um, thank you. So we have no more questions for Mr. Spiegel. I think, um, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts. And it is now, we're looking for Mr. Butler to turn on his video. Hello?
Hello. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Thanks for letting me join you briefly here. So I'm joining on behalf of the Software Preservation Network, and just wanted to add a little gloss to some of the, some of the modifications that we proposed in our reply comments. So I was able to watch our team, yes, on Monday, and they did a wonderful job. And I think they actually were able to communicate this, but on reflection, it really seemed to me that there was a lot of concern, both from the office and from some of the industry folks, about the notion of a public, you know, a publicly accessible arcade that anyone who finds, who stumbles upon the collection could play online unmediated. And so I just wanted to reiterate that it's our view that the new concessions in our reply comments sort of add up to a situation where that's, that shouldn't be covered by the exemption. So the, the requirements for being eligible that we adapted from the, you know, sort of revised 108 discussion document include that final requirement that reasonable digital security measures as appropriate to the activities be in place. And then we also suggested that if, again, if this is a real concern, you know, public access unmediated is a real concern, then also the language from 108 about, you know, having no prior notice or no notice that the requestor intends to use the material for any reason other than private study, scholarship, or research. Given those two things together, it seems that, you know, an open, a wide-open, unmediated kind of online arcade situation, you know, would be a situation where at least arguably the security systems in place are not adequate, given that the purpose is to provide access only to people with, you know, that sort of private study type of an intent, right? We would be kind of on constructive notice that some people who stumble across this stuff would not have that purpose, and we wouldn't be doing enough to prevent those folks from having access if we just created a wide-open online arcade. So if the, if the rule that you're trying to craft is one that precludes that sort of wide-open, unmediated arcade, we think this rule is it. And we just wanted, I, we thought that might be helpful to you because we, we could feel the angst in the virtual room over that possibility. And if you're, so one way to do that, if you're worried that that is not clear in the text of the rule, we'd also be open to kind of, I suppose, the equivalent of legislative history, right? In the registrar's recommendation, you could explain that it is the office's view, you know, that that is the office's interpretation of those two provisions in combination. And, you know, folks like us who try to give advice and guidance would take note of that and tell our clients and our, and our institutions.
Um, thank you. Yes, we do consider the registrar's recommendation, as well as the preamble to the final rule to be administrative credent provided by the office or, or the library. Do either of my colleagues have questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Butler. So our, our next speaker will be Letitia Reynolds. If Ms. Reynolds could turn on her video, and then I just wanted to, you know, make sure those who are next are aware. So Gina Conifar, if you're here, could you raise your hand so you can be promoted to a panelist? Then we also are looking for Kevin O'Reilly and Dennis Rigdon. All right. And here is Ms. Reynolds. Great. Um, I can see you're here, but if you could please turn your video on if you would like to have video.
So I'm not 100% sure. My video is on. You just can't see me. So.
Okay, well, we can hear you, but you're a black square. So if you would like to, that's fine. If you would like to go ahead, it might be a camera issue, but if you'd like, we can hang for a second if you would like to figure it out. Let me know.
I don't want to take everybody's time, so I'll go ahead and head. It's a new computer, so maybe I haven't figured out all the kinks of it yet. So my name is Letitia Reynolds. I am the president of the Colorado Association of Biomedical Equipment Technicians, and I am, sorry, I've never done this before. So I am coming to try to persuade that we look at service materials needed for medical equipment repair is exempted from some of the copyright rules. I'm looking, think, talking about like service keys or programs that are used to do maintenance. Medical device manufacturers are hiding kind of the essential repair information and tools behind the Digital Millennium Copyright Act. And this has made it where biomed's across the country are unable to support and maintain devices that maybe they have within their facilities. In a time like the pandemic that we have suffered last year, it made it where critical devices, unfortunately, we weren't able to maintain without relying totally on the manufacturers, which could lead into a delay of patient care and expensive repair costs, having to send them out or wait on vendors. So I encourage you to exempt service tools needed from some of the copyright regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Does anyone have any further questions?
Maybe just a clarification there. When you say that they are making those not available, what do you mean? Are they locked on the device itself? Are they behind a paywall that you have to pay extra money to get those? Can you describe just a little bit how, why is it that you're not able to access those repair materials or manuals?
Sometimes manufacturers will not even, even, even if you've been to school, they won't provide those materials. Other ones, you have to go to school, even if they're devices your own, that maybe a hospital or facility owns. And so unless you pay extra additional money or subscription fee, you don't have access to those materials. And that can go with service literature as well. I've seen examples. I work on anesthesia units, and I went to school, but those, those manufacturers wouldn't give you access unless you paid for a tool or a software to get access to those manuals. And so then you're very limited on your ability to repair medical devices without tools, maybe for maintenance, routine maintenance, or even service events.
Okay, that's helpful for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so next we have Kevin O'Reilly, and then just to, to preview who will be up next, Dennis Rigdon, Gay Gordon Byrne, and Paul Roberts. If you can raise your hand, if you're an attendee, so we can get ready to bring you up. And Mr. O'Reilly, if you could turn on your video, we are ready, we are ready to hear from you.
Great. Thank you so much. My name is Kevin O'Reilly. I am a right-to-repair advocate with US PERG. Again, under, I'm here to talk about Class 12 and the repair of electronic devices, also particularly about medical equipment. So the, the problem that exists today, as Letitia just touched on, is that qualified biomedical repair technicians, also known as biomed's, are often locked out from being able to fix essential medical equipment, things like ventilators, imaging equipment, anesthesia machines, and all sorts of devices throughout the hospital. This has been a problem for a long time, but it's especially come under the microscope during the pandemic, you know, at a moment when manufacturers and biomed's that work for the hospital or even independent service organizations all should have been working together. Many in-hospital and IS or independent biomed's continue to be locked out from servicing equipment, leading to delays of days to weeks to sometimes over a month. When you need a, you know, a patient comes in and needs a ventilator or needs an MRI machine, there's no time to wait for a, an authorized or really branded technician to, to come out and make the fix. So these software keys are, and software locks are a common way that it happens. And what we're really hoping is that we can, you know, remove the kind of fact that they're hiding behind the DMCA to shield this branded, branded repair in order to deliver the, the benefit to patient care. One thing that is worth noting is, is the FDA has looked into this and, and looked at whether or not there should be any regulation as far as in-house and independent biomed's go. And since 1996, they have decided not to undertake rulemaking on this account. So the FDA has purposely not taken any action on this. So we hope that by, you know, allowing for this circumvention that we won't allow the manufacturers to go further than what the FDA has called for.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. I have a couple of questions, and my colleagues made two. Do you have any, when you say the FDA has looked at this, can you provide any, I don't know, citation or any reference to, to that that is public?
Absolutely. So the FDA issued a report in 2018. I can look up the name of it or also provide. Hold on, I've got it right here. So the report is called the FDA Report on the Quality, Safety, and Effectiveness of Servicing of Medical Devices. And then I can also follow up with the exact page number where, where they go into the specifics on the decision as far as rulemaking goes.
Um, okay, thank you. I think, you know, I think we have your contact information. And if we are going to be issuing a post-haring letter, we would include you in, you know, the set of people who have commented on this class that could receive one. But in your, do you have knowledge as to whether that report addresses copyright or the DMCA or software locks at all as a consideration?
So it doesn't look into software locks and more looks at the decision of whether or not the FDA would impose the regulations that it imposes on medical device manufacturers, on the basically third-party repairers, whether that's hot, you know, folks that work for the hospital, folks who work for independent repair organizations.
Right. So in the determination not to commence a rulemaking, it doesn't seem to your knowledge that the FDA was imputing a reliance interest upon the copyright laws in separately regulating third-party actions.
Yeah, to my, to my knowledge, that was the case.
Okay, but is it to your knowledge that it is the DMCA right now that is sort of serving as a butt-for-a-cah that is precluding this repair that you would like to see enabled?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding. We've seen cases where independent service organizations have found ways to, to break those service locks that exist. And they have been pursued for, for litigation by the manufacturer themselves citing this. So we, we're worried about that and think that that shouldn't be the case because ultimately, the ability of folks to do that is, allows for better patient care.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think next we're looking for Ms. Gordon Byrne, and then Paul Roberts, Mark Schaefer. Get ready, raise your hand. But this is Gordon Byrne, if you could turn on your video. Okay, please go ahead.
Okay. Hello. My name is Gay Gordon Byrne. I'm the executive director of the Repair Association. Here to talk about the exemptions for anything with embedded software in Class 12. And what I'd like to try to get across is that repair doesn't create piracy. It just returns equipment to function. And if, from the repair community perspective, the only really interesting thing that we need to do is be able to restore the equipment according to whatever it is, the tools that are provided by the manufacturer that are not made up. These are tools that are made for that purpose, and they are being withheld. And that means that no matter what somebody wants to do, whether it's fixing a ventilator, a tractor, a cellphone, a refrigerator, they are limited. And I don't see that there's, I, I believe there should be a very strong standard for blocking repair. And I think it should be associated with actual evidence of piracy, because absent piracy, there's no, there, I don't see why we can't all fix our stuff. So games can't be played on a broken device. It means that the owner can't use the games that they've lawfully acquired. It probably also drives that game station owner to go buy a new console to be able to play the games they've already purchased. And I think that that is a consequence that it shouldn't be something that the Copyright Office creates. Same thing with being able to repair any other thing with an embedded device. I look back at the Napster experience, because I was a parent of teenagers in that time, and Napster did go after their customers. And they, they chose a couple of teenagers, and they went after them, and parents like me said, "Uh-uh, I'm not doing that. Take that stuff off. Take that stuff away." And Napster went away. So I'm curious as to what the, the content providers are doing in terms of enforcement, because it strikes me that they're really being kind of lazy. They could be building things that can be repaired without any kind of piracy. They could be authenticating in different ways if it's really happening. And if it's not really happening, especially with the technology that came out of the 80s and 90s, why are we, why are we blocking legal repair? Are we really making a difference? Is this something that should be done? And I, I just urge you to take a look at some of those things that is very, very distortion to a legal repair market, and that's what we're trying to expand and not make more difficult. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Gordon Byrne? No? We appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think next we will have Paul Roberts, and then I just want to call out again the three people that have signed up that we've not been able to locate, in case you're, if you're, if you come here, raise your hand, but Gina Conifar, Dennis Rigdon, and Mark Schaefer. But Mr. Roberts, we're happy to see you. And please go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay? Okay. Thank you very much for inviting me to speak. My name's Paul Roberts, and I'm the founder of SecureRepairs.org. We're a volunteer group of more than 200 of the world's top information security and information technology professionals who support the right to repair. And I'm here today to argue in favor of the Class 12 exemption for repair of all software-enabled devices. So the first thing I want to do is to offer my group to you as a resource on questions or concerns you may have about the intersection between technical protection mechanisms, TPMs, and cybersecurity. Our members in Secure Repairs include experts and academics and independent security researchers in areas like hardware and software security, including some of the top researchers in areas like embedded device security, the security of medical devices, and more. And we are here really for you as a resource. So you have my contact information, and I would be happy to connect you with any of our experts to answer, to do one-on-one sessions or Zoom sessions to field questions that you might have on these issues. Because I understand they are complex. You guys aren't cybersecurity natives. And so these, these can be challenging and confusing issues to contend with, and I really appreciate that. And I, I really welcome your efforts. Let me just say briefly, I think it's really important for all of you to understand, and, you know, kind of the, the nature of cybersecurity problems with embedded devices, connected devices, including, you know, let's say, medical devices or Internet of Things devices, smart home devices. The, the attacks and threats facing these devices have nothing to do with data stored or secured by TPMs. Data needed to access a device and repair it, replace a part, and get that part to be recognized by the device, right? Attacks on, on connected devices have to do with poor security and poor design or poor deployment of the device itself. For example, in 2015, TrapX, a security company, wrote a report called MedJack about a string of attacks on hospitals that targeted specifically the malware-targeted connected medical devices. The problem there was that many of these medical devices, this was in 2015, were running an operating system, Windows operating system, that was almost 10 years old. And that's incredibly common in the medical device space and in other spaces. So I, I think you need to understand that companies that are mature and healthy and robust in terms of information security have certain practices that they have enacted. Internal security reviews, software security by Internal security reviews, software security by design, default and deployment. They have bounty programs, so they reach out to independent security researchers and invite them in to test the security of their products. They don't practice what many of these device makers are trying to push on you, which is security through obscurity. That if we just prevent people from accessing our platform or understanding at all how it works, then we can keep it secure. And the reason that doesn't work is very simple, which is cyber criminals, whether those are nation state actors like Russia and China or just motivated, you know, criminals, uh, for-profit cyber criminal groups are very resourceful and they're very determined. And they frankly really don't care what the Library of Congress or the FTC or anybody else says the rules are. They're going to do what they need to do to get access to the systems that they want to access. Who it disadvantages are white hat independent security researchers, repair technicians and professionals who want to access these devices for pro-social reasons to extend their useful life, to conduct above-board security research on into the cybersecurity of the device itself so that the company can be aware of a cybersecurity flaw and issue a patch for it and improve the overall security of the entire connected device ecosystem. So I, I just want to make really clear that the types of information, um, that we're talking about that is, um, you know, that we need to, that, that repair professionals and technicians need to get access to, to replace parts, service problems, update software is not the type that, um, hackers are after or malicious actors or ransomware groups to carry out attacks, steal information and so on. We know that there isn't a link between repair and, and, and these types of attacks because we already have an epidemic of these attacks in healthcare, in smart home, in many, in, in obviously critical infrastructure sectors as well. And this is happening independently of any, you know, broadly written right to repair. So I really would encourage you to, grant this, uh, exemption for repair, uh, and allow, um, the very important work of repair professionals and technicians to go ahead and, and not to get suckered into this kind of security through obscurity argument. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Um, do we have any questions then? No, but we, we appreciate, um, your contribution today. I think.
Please do feel free to reach out if you, if you want to connect with any of our experts. It's, it's an excellent resource for you on some of these questions.
Okay, thanks. We, we appreciate it. At this point, our sort of solicitation of information is, is nearing conclusion. So if we issue post hearing letters, we'll include you on this, the class, and we will also institute, you know, at the corporate office, a process for ex parte communications where if you can come and talk to us, but you need to disclose what you've said so that everyone who's interested in the area can follow along. Yep. Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, so I think the last person we've been able to locate is Mark Schaefer. If we could bring him up, please. And then just, um, just noting two signups, Dennis Rigdon and Gina Conifar. If you, you are here, end up being here, raise your hand. Otherwise, I think this Mr. Schaefer will be our last speaker. Hello, Mr. Schaefer. Um, we're, we're interested in hearing from your contribution.
Sure. Sorry about that. I was on double secret mute. It does happen. My apologies. So yeah, thank you for, for hearing from me today. I, I know you've heard from, um, several of us already. And I just, I just wanted to reiterate, I think, the need for making sure that, um, owners of their products, be they're phones, laptops, tablets, whatever, they have the right to repair their products if there aren't software issues or other issues that are preventing them from having the choices to be able to pick where they want to take their products to be repaired and to have their products repaired. So I don't, I think from a consumer standpoint, so I'm, I'm speaking as, as a consumer of many of these products, I would love to be able to, hey, if my battery is dead or my screen is broken, then I have the choice to do that. But I don't necessarily have to send it back to the OEM or I am encouraged more along the lines of having to buy a new device. I think as from an environmental perspective, you don't want to have to go buy a new, new device when most of 80, 90% of your device is still functioning. So you need to have the ability to have those choices as the consumer. And I, I just think I'd like, I'd like to see more support for that. I want to make sure that there isn't the ability to use DCMA and other, um, legal, I guess, I don't even say loopholes necessarily, but you know, legal issues around why I can't do that as a consumer. Now, I, I just would like to support, uh, seeing more, more support for repair and preventing hiding in some of these tech, technical things that are available to some of the manufacturers today so that we can actually extend the life of our products and bring, you know, bring the consumers more into the front because it's very hard. I, I engage in many standards and other things to try to improve these products, but it's very hard for the voice of the consumer to be heard. So I do strongly appreciate your time today to hear sort of the voice of, of one of the consumers that, um, loves his electronics, but also gets a little frustrated with, uh, some of the limitations that are put upon them, um, in making sure I can extend the life of those products. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The consumer perspective is certainly valuable. Thank you for, for coming today.
Thank you. All right, I'm late.
Oh, no, no worries. Um, and, uh, I think we have found the next panelist too. So certainly no worries at all. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And if we could promote Mr. Conifar, am I, am I not saying that right?
Hello there. Hi, oh, hey, everyone. Um, I, first of all, I want to thank, uh, thank you all for the proceedings. I've been dipping in and out during my workday over the, over the last, last few days. And I, I really appreciate the, uh, the process that's been run and, and the care and attention that, that's put in, been put into this. Uh, my name is Ceni Canifa. I'm CEO of a company called Waveform. Yeah, honestly, my, historically, that the, um, the part that I've been most interested in is, is on the unlocking side, but I missed most of the hearings this morning, um, on, on, on that front. One thing I, I did want to, um, kind of add there is like, it's just, you know, I, I think with the rollout of 5G, we see, you know, companies like Apple building their own 5G chipsets. And I, I really think that that integration is going to become broader and broader and that the need for unlocking in different types of devices is going to become greater and greater. And so I think, um, as a consumer and as a technologist, I really encourage boarding those, those unlocking rules to apply to more types of devices. Um, and then secondarily, kind of reflecting on, on yesterday's hearings on the repair side of things. Now, I run a company that, um, sells wireless devices to consumers to help rural customers improve cellphone reception. And one of the biggest problems that we run into as a reseller is that our vendors don't take returns very often for the products that they sell us. And so we need to be able to repair, um, those devices in order for them to, in order to not have to throw them away. And the degree to which these software devices are becoming basically pure technology, one of the most popular devices that we actually sell is this way. It's a, it's an ASIC with custom firmware and custom software. It's very little of what we used to sell a decade ago, which was, um, you know, as the ceramic-based filter that would amplify your cell signal. It's all software. And, um, being able to, um, repair those types of devices for us is just critical to honestly, running a profitable business because these devices break, you know, on the regular. And, and so expanding, I think, the repair provisions to, um, or, uh, exemption to all kinds of devices is really, really important for companies like mine. Let's go.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Okay. Well, well, thank you for, for speaking today. It was very helpful.
Thank you so much.
Um, I think that then concludes the hearings for the total and rulemaking. And if, I think I've mentioned a couple of times, but it, it offers me to issue post hearing letters to participants in a particular class. And then we will continue our analysis. Um, we've appreciated got a lot of good information, I think, through these hearings. So we will continue analyzing, consulting with NCA. And then the rulemaking is, you know, on track to be completed in October of this year. Thank you very much.